Calling to order at 4:31. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, let the record reflect that all trustees are in attendance. Moving on to approval of agenda, February 13th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public statements related to agenda items, please limit statements to three minutes.
We have one speaker, Randy Painter.
Just a brief statement that isn't specifically to the agenda, but more just about the study session formats, which is that for the people that do make the effort to show up and are interested in these study sessions and in the material that's presented, it would be really helpful if you would make the materials that are presented to the board available to the public that show up as well, either in advance or here at the study session. Thank you.
Any other comments?
There are handouts for today's at the table.
Okay.
There should be transportation. It says San Mateo Foster City Board of Trustees Transportation Workshop. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our study session, transportation program in the San Mateo Foster City School District.
Staff have been asked to bring forward a presentation of the transportation program in our district. So today we do have an agenda related to transportation. There are a number of questions that we will address in a subsequent workshop, but this will give us a base understanding of what is going on with transportation. So Patrick Gaffney, our CBO, is going to help with this workshop and he is going to go over the agenda for tonight.
Thanks everybody. So we've looked at a week, different slides here, kind of this discussion, and I learned a lot. Started last week, I started some first student and Sam Trans, got a lot of information shared tonight. And we have about 1,206 students transported daily in the district between first student and Sam Trans. So a lot of hard work, a lot of individual safety. We highlighted something, there's an issue that Joan's gonna walk through with you about the, oh, so sorry.
On, oh, thank you. It's better. Can hear myself. So Joan's gonna walk through a little bit of history with you. We're gonna give you some data in terms of what total costs look like, and then we're gonna talk about some of the concerns we've heard about from the community and from some of the leadership teams too. And then we're gonna give you some data regarding first student and regards to Sam Trans as well too. And we're gonna talk about some positives and some considerations. Okay, so I think Joan, you're gonna talk about that.
Alright, so the transportation program started many years ago when there was a district-wide integration program. And our best information shows that the integration program started in 1968 and 69, where North Central students, grades one and up, were bused to 22 schools at the time. There was a school named Lawrence and they took the kindergarten students. It was in the neighborhood and Turnbull was a middle school. In the eighties, there was declining enrollment and the board did close Turnbull, Lakeshore, Buena Vista, which we don't have Buena Vista or Lakeshore anymore, Bearsford, Knowles, and Fiesta Gardens. And Lawrence then in the eighties was relocated to Turnbull. And also in that time, the board began to establish some neighborhoods in North Central that had a specified school for the students to go to. So there were about 10 schools that were assigned North Central students at that time. Now, in the nineties, we know that the magnet school initiatives began, and that was a different kind of maneuvering of families and different schools for specific reasons. And then again, in the early 2000s, the North Central schools' boundaries were adjusted and the students were assigned to only seven schools. And the seven schools that North Central students are attending right now, Baywood, Park, Highlands, Bearsford, Meadow Heights, Sunny Bray, and Laurel. And you're going to see some information that we've gathered about where they're going and their bus, those transportation routes. Alright, so this slide is something that you've already seen in a chart that was provided by Cameron Lewis in our education services team. He had done a graph showing SES balance. This is actually a graph that's pulled from a government report that we do. It's called CalPads. And so while it does not have the actual percentage of socioeconomically disadvantaged students, in the last column, it does have the numbers of students. And I think the numbers of students plays in because of the fact that we will be looking at the numbers of students on these different transportation routes. So for example, if we walk across, just to orient you, Abbott Middle School has 797 students at this time that CalPads was taken. We had 212 English learners. There were some, there were 72, what they call Title III immigrant students. And of course, remember, we do have our newcomer program there. So that makes sense. Some students with gifted and talented designator, no migrant ed. We don't actually run a migrant ed program in this district. We don't qualify for that. We do have students with disabilities at Abbott. And then the number of socioeconomic, 360. So this is just a charting of the schools in a different format from one you've already seen. So I'll turn it over to Patrick.
So we gave you tonight just a quick snapshot of the current year transportation budget, total cost overall, looking in excess of $3 million. So we broke it down for you in terms of what the specialized costs are and some of the regular ed costs and some of the non-public school, non-public agency costs associated with it. And just some other items there such as repairs for different transportation vehicles. That's our overall transportation budget. And later on, we talk about opportunities. It just kind of puts it in context for you what kind of total costs we're looking at currently. Okay? Okay, so we gave you kind of a quick recap tonight too of some concerns you've heard expressed from the community and, and an overall representation of some of the data points we're looking at too in terms of the total number of students, right? So first bullet here talks about 695 students were bused from North Central to other locations in the district daily by first student. Okay? Approximately 190, I should say approximately 190 North Central students were bused to other locations in the district by Sam Trans daily. And then first student and Sam Trans are both faced, so we heard from both of them, the challenge of recruiting and retaining drivers in our community. They have a lot of turnover. And we had some challenges earlier this year. We had a challenge as early as last week or as late as last week at Bowditch where a route was changed and folks didn't hear about it and they attribute to they got a shortage of drivers. So it's a challenge all around. Okay? And what we're concerned about too is when buses are late, are students losing out on instructional time, right? So we got some data for you too about trends we're seeing in particular locations within our district. Okay, so one of the concerns we're hearing about students losing instructional time and buses are late. And there are students that spend a significant amount of time on the bus, depending on where their location is and where their destination is. And I learned a lot of detail about that too. And then we've heard from the drivers of first student too about the late bus patterns, that they don't appear to be linear, they're erratic, and some of that's associated with traffic congestion at different points in time. We all live it, right? Traffic can take, you know, 20 minutes to run down from 92 down here. So the drivers are faced with that challenge as well too. And then they also share with me that occasionally there, it's one of their challenges is just what's happening at the site. If parents are dropping off their students, the bus is trying to get there, they don't open the doors until the driveway is cleared so they can get through. So that's some of the challenges they're faced with as well too. Okay? We've heard from staff about time that they're spending monitoring if buses are late or just logistics, the amount of time that they're spending on a daily basis monitoring students. And that's associated with the supply and demand of buses. I share with you too, this next bullet, how Sam Trans has changed routes and there's not an active communication, there's a passive communication to the district. They post them on their website, which we have to go to the website to find, and we're having conversations about that. We'll get into that in a few minutes too. And we also learned too that, and when our slides later, we showed you that the Burrell students are paying for bus passes. And that's a little bit of history and some of the concerns we've heard too. Okay? So this next slide deck here, I'm sorry, the font's a little small. I tried to get into one page for you to see this in the aggregate. And what first student did was they share with us, they have a couple different systems. They have a focus system. They have another system they use as well too. Those two systems don't communicate directly with each other. But this data is coming from the first student focus report that they generate. And we asked them for data from the beginning of year all the way through to the current period in time, because I wanted to see in aggregate every single bus that was late this year. So we particularly the whole year. They've produced some of that information and we're still working with them to get the aggregate, look at the entire year. But you'll see in this report, they capture for a similar period of time, although they're different periods of time, first sites. We quantify the number of routes and then we quantify the number of routes that are on time or early during that period of time of roughly a month. And then we quantify for you the number of routes that are beyond what they call this five-minute scheduled arrival time. Okay? And then we're expressing that number of times that is beyond the five-minute threshold arrival time as a percentage for you, right? So we express the percentage of arrival times greater than five minutes beyond the scheduled arrival time relative to the total number of routes to the school in that period of time. And you'll see, there are some schools where there are some, there are routes that are showing up late. And so we want to focus on that with first student. And for some of these sites, they do talk about the congestion, the traffic. It's not a linear, simple, there's no one on the road that can get there like clockwork. And so it's a challenge. You'll see the challenges are highlighted here too. The other thing I'll mention to you too, just as a little bit of minutia, but the two reports and the two systems I spoke to, this report talks about a focus report. And what this report references for us is that when the bus physically gets into what they call a geozone, right? And the geozone is when the bus arrives on the property. And they have another report which shows when they actually open the door to the bus to let the kids off. So we could have some other data that shows that although the bus may be physically on the property, it may sit for minutes also before they open the bus because of what I talked about earlier, that there's parents in the way, I should say, but parents dropping off their kids not in the way, but in the way of, you know, the driver getting the kids off the bus, it's an issue they're trying to manage, right? So that's a quick data point for you there. Okay?
Alright, so this was information that we thought might be of interest to you also. This points out, again, how many students are at each school, because part of the question you've asked is about SES and also about the number of North Central students attending the schools. So we have here, for example, at Abbott, 797 students in the school, 360 are socioeconomically disadvantaged students, 229 are coming from North Central. And they're coming on two buses, 79 kids and 77 kids there. So that gives you the percentage of students who are coming in on the bus as a total of the enrollment. What I find particularly important about this is that, for example, at Laurel, you have 556 students, 275 socioeconomically disadvantaged students at the school, 165 are North Central, 77 riding the bus. And that's 13%. You can see that, that there is a significant student population that is in the low socioeconomic realm in the neighborhood at Laurel. So when we look at SES balance, we need to remember who is living in the neighborhood, what's the profile of the neighborhood, and what is the profile of the students coming. And we're gonna have more information about the profile of the students coming in a later presentation. We do have two discrepant areas, Bayside and Lead. We're not exactly sure why those numbers look like that, so we are trying to figure that out, but did not have time before this meeting.
Okay, the next slide is just a quick recap also what's happening with Sam Trans. And there are students that they're transporting daily. And the students are going to North Cent, or sorry, to Burrell and to Bowditch, right? Those are the routes that are going in, where they're coming from, and where they're arriving, and shows you the total number of students. And it's showing you the same thing in terms of data, the bus students as a percentage of the overall student population. And we talked about some of the challenges with Sam Trans earlier too. On the right-hand side, you'll see here too, what's been quantified for us is the total number of students that have, are receiving bus passes. And there's a reduced fare bus pass that some students are receiving, and a free bus pass students are receiving. Okay? So that's a concern we heard from some of the leadership team.
Alright.
Okay.
So there are things that we feel very positively about with our transportation program, but there are also some areas that we would like to see improved. Obviously, the most important thing is that students are transported safely. That doesn't mean on time, but they're transported safely and it's a lot of students every day. We are in weekly conversations now with first student and talking about ways to improve their support for our students. And Sam Trans is hosting its first meeting with county superintendents this month. And I will be in attendance along with other staff, because we need to, we need to have a clearer way of understanding if they're changing routes. You will remember the beginning of the school year, where we were told right before school opened that we were not gonna have buses for three days. And our attempts to deal with that, which was very difficult. So we are going to be having our first meeting with them in this month. We have requested that they forward information directly, so that we're not every day going to the website to see if some route has been changed. Now, in an effort to try to improve services, the biggest issue is that dispatch is literally leaving the office to ride, to drive buses because they don't have enough drivers. Or buses are having to go back, like in a circular, they have to go back to pick up kids because they don't have enough drivers. So what can we do about that? Maybe we need to look at our pickup drop-off times. That would mean that we would group schools and it would drive the bell schedule. So you would be telling schools when they should start based on getting these buses to the schools in a timely way. But you can see the number of students and the need. So we may need to change drop-off, pickup times, which might affect bell schedules. We're also, when we went out for our RFP, one of the things to remember is that only first student bid. No other bus company felt that they were large enough to be able to take on our district. So one of the things we might want to explore is grouping our district in different quadrants, maybe breaking into three or four sections. And when we do our next RFP, it might attract, well, maybe one would be willing and able to take all of them on, but it also might attract smaller companies that could take a section but couldn't take our whole district. As we develop our plans for the new school in North Central, that could reduce ridership. And also around staffing, we are continuing to post for bus aid positions because we need to have some staff to be able to help with monitoring the students, should they be left. So we continue to post and look for those positions. But again, those are not positions that we're having difficulty with. I mean, we're having difficulty recruiting for those positions. So this is just a presentation predominantly on the actual transportation program, not so much into the SES. However, I wanted to point some things out to you because we want to come back on our socioeconomic balance at a later time. And so this may prompt some thinking and some questions that you would like for us to research as we come back. And David Chambliss will be leading that section of the presentation, so he's here in order to hear what kinds of questions you might have. So questions, comments, discussion on the transportation workshop, and/or any questions you would like us to start looking into maybe for a future transportation slash SES workshop.
I have a couple things. So I'm interested to know a little bit more about, so knowing that, knowing how, and I know that you said that this is something that school sites are gonna be looking into a little bit more, but where are the instances where students are significantly late? So being five minutes late is very different than being 30 minutes late, is very different than being an hour late, and we don't have that information. So I think that's, it doesn't allow us to necessarily have the kind of analysis that we want without that. The other thing I feel like in the data that is missing that's extremely important is, so the general ed and special ed routes are being grouped together in terms of lateness, and I would like those broken down, general ed versus special education. I know that we're working on continuums, but I also know, I would be interested to know if this data is skewed towards some of the special education routes being later than some of the general ed routes. And I think we, there's a little bit more within our control as it pertains to special education, particularly when students are going, for example, from San Mateo to Foster City. How can we increase the opportunities for students with special needs to be in their home schools? And I know that there are, it's complex, I understand that, but as a former special education, as a former, formal, former special education teacher, I think that, you know, it's much more important for kids to be immersed in a community than it is for them to be in a classroom that is exactly with kids that are exactly, you know, have, are classified with, you know, a similar disability or however that happens. So I would like for that data to be available and for us to consider how we could potentially expedite the way in which we're creating those. Yeah, I'll stop there.
May I respond to a little bit of that? We do have the minutes, the exact minutes, that each of these is late. So we were trying to group to say that, you know, if you're five minutes late, you're pretty late. So we can get the data on that. We've also asked for, you can see that these are snapshots of a month.
Right.
We're asking for a monthly snapshot every month, end of the month, and it does have the whole amount, how many exact minutes. So we can pull that and we can start sending that to use for information.
Do you know, I mean, do you know off the top of your head, what, if there are sites that are more, you know, sites where you would, they're later, like they're significantly late?
Yeah. They, so Fiesta Gardens, Joel, help me out. So Fiesta Gardens.
Yeah, we don't have it in front of us.
Oh, I'm sorry, off the top of my head. I have, well, we, like you said, Joel, I mean, two things. One is, Shar, we can get you all, we have reports by site, we have by route. And the routes are differentiated by special ed versus regular ed.
Okay.
So I can give you that explicit information, and we can break it down that way to see. And what we're trying, what you're talking about is what we're talking about too, which is we're trying to find patterns here.
Yeah.
And what, what can we attribute that lateness to?
Yeah.
I, off the top of my head, I don't think that there, I don't think the lateness is disproportionate, special ed versus regular ed. That's just off the top of my head from what I looked at, starting last Friday. So.
Except that one of them, which will stand out to you, as you know, Brewer Island is not a North Central route. And you can see that it is clearly a special education route, arriving over half the time late. Now, so we can split that out by literally the minutes and by general ed and special ed, and we can get that for you.
And we've got feedback from first student as well too about the late sped buses, Laurel, Parkside, Fiesta Gardens, and what they associate some of that lateness to. So I'm happy to share that feedback with you as well.
Yeah.
Can we go back to your first comment, just so I understand what you're saying too, because you had mentioned.
She wants the minutes that there, how many minutes they're late?
Okay.
How many minutes they're late?
And what I asked him before, Shar, I said, can you put that into Excel for me so I can, right? And they're working on that.
Okay. Yeah, I think that that'll be really helpful, because then I think we're talking about actual data that can allow us to make effective decisions, like this being grouped together and not having the number of minutes late. It's really hard for us to think about what the solutions are.
And it goes from the latest thing I saw, like 29 minutes late to 18 minutes early, you know? So there's that. And why, and so there's the flip side of that, is if we, if we're consistently getting kids there early, 17 minutes early, and we know for young people sleeping, right? If the bus could show up 15 minutes later and there's a consistency to that, then, you know, they could spend more, you know what I'm saying? So we're trying to do all those things. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
No, no, I'm not done. I'm just waiting.
Oh, okay.
I'm not done either, but I'm stopping for now.
Okay, well, so thank you for your presentation. Let's see, where shall I begin? So I'll start with the transportation cost. So I think it's important to see this, right? But I think something that we're missing is like another line that tells us like the exact number of students, because I think that's an important part of, you know, being able to see, see it broken down a little more. I, I mean, I do think that like the, the other chart, where is it? This one. The recap of pickup locations in the AM, non-special ed, that one, that one shows us like the number of students, right? So that's a part of it. But like for special ed, I think it'd be great to know like how many students exactly.
Okay.
And also like NPS. Also, something that just really stands out is the fact that, you know, looking at the dates that were reported, like it's really inconsistent and that's really concerning that we don't have like consistent data. It means that they're not, they, they aren't looking at it. They're not being, you know, I think, I'm really, I'm happy that we're doing this, because I think it's a step in the direction to like have more accountability for, you know, for these students that we're serving, that we have a responsibility to serve. So I'm glad, but I'm also, you know, it's also frustrating to see that we don't really have a good picture, you know? We have like an incomplete picture. Two of the schools, we don't even have data on, right? There's no report. That's not great. It's not great. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that we're gonna be thinking about potential solutions. I do think that breaking the district up into quadrants, I think that could also create more confusion, right? Like if we're having trouble keeping one transportation company accountable, and then we're gonna try to keep track of four who all have different, four different processes for how they do things, like that sounds really hard, but who knows? It might be easier.
Yeah.
We don't know. But, also, I just wanted to clarify, my understanding is that, like now our staff is gonna be keeping track of how late kids are actually to class, because what, from what I know, when students are late because of the bus, they're not really, they're not marked down late, which is not, you know, it's, it's not true. We're not keeping a true account of like if kids are late or not.
So I do want to clarify that. They're not marked late because that goes into their own personal student record. It is not their fault that they were late. We are asking staff, staff, even though they're not marking a child late in their personal record that goes along with them into middle school and high school, that we're asking them to keep track at their school site as to whether or not it's late, so we can compare our geo-tracking monthly report that we're now getting against what we see at a site, just to see if there's a good correlation.
Yeah, and I'm glad we're doing that now, but the point that I'm trying to highlight is that we haven't been doing that. And when we look at data about how late our kids are, we're not seeing the big picture. We're not seeing how late they really were, you know? And that is something that is just really unfortunate for those kids, you know? It makes me sad for them. And actually, I was one of them, and my kid is still one of them. So, another thing, Patrick, that you mentioned was, you know, when kids are at school really early. really early, that also means, like, I've had the experience myself, that like I take my son to the bus stop and the bus already left, you know? I, I know I'm supposed to get there at 7:45, I'm there at 7:43.
Right.
And the bus is already gone.
Right.
You know, luckily, I have a car, I can get them there.
Right.
It's harder, but other families, like, they don't.
Right.
And so, that's, yeah, I just, I, I'm, and I'm, I'm so, part of why I'm saying these things is not, I'm not like assigning blame. I think that, you know, our district can and is and will continue to do things better for these students, but I think it's just, you know, it's important to, to like say these things, because these are kind of stories that aren't really told, and people are like living this on the day, on the day, on a daily basis, and our kids are, and like, nobody's like saying this for them, you know?
Yeah.
And even though it's an obstacle that they are having to go through, you know, For the SAM Trans issue, I think that our district needs to be giving our students that are socially, economically disadvantaged free bus passes, like as soon as possible. That is like an easy thing that we can do to invest in these students, and we should be doing that. Let me see. Okay, one more thing, and then I'll let other people speak. Okay, well, okay, I'll just, I'll just stop there.
No, can I just, two things I want to share?
Yeah, yeah.
Number one is, the First Student shared with us that they're transporting 158 special ed students daily, so that's a number I didn't capture for you, but it's 158. And I used to ride three buses a day to get to school, so hopefully we can come up with some solutions for these kids, so I understand.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And just, in addition to what these two have already said, which I strongly agree with, I think if we're talking about possibly pickup and drop-off times or locations and bell schedules, that coming up with solutions before speaking to, you know, the stakeholders is, I don't want to say scary, but I think that's how rumors get started. So, if that is ever a topic, we really need to let everybody know in an, in an, an amount of time where they can actually make the meeting, because that's going to affect them and parent schedules and whatnot. If the buses are leaving early or coming late, I mean, we're paying for that on a contract or something, so, I don't know, do we get a discount?
Yep.
You know, I don't know, we shouldn't have to. And then, smaller bus companies group in smaller quadrants. I think that, I understand your point in like if we can't even control these ones, how are we going to add more to it? But if that, I don't know, I'd definitely add that to the list to explore. And then, how does one get a reduced or free bus pass? How is that, how do you know about that, and where do you get that? Sorry, they're everywhere. This is a different topic. No, Ryan, that's it. Thank you.
Rebecca, just really quickly, in regards, we, the district can, we can work through the district on the bus passes, we can choreograph that for folks. And then, we have spent time reviewing the contract, and there's explicit language in the current contract that speaks to compensation for the district if buses are late beyond a certain number of minutes. In the current contract, my, one of my recollection is if they are beyond 15 minutes late, then there is this compensation for the district. And so, that's why I want to quantify the entire year, to look at what that looks like for us, and break it down by site, by day, by minutes, and go through it very methodically. So, which may lead to a discussion about the contract moving forward, which says, right, so, we'll get to that next. But we've got to have a starting point to quantify it, to have the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with what everyone said. I, I guess, a couple of comments. I, I kind of liked the idea of the discount, but then I started to think, you know, corporations oftentimes, like, it's like a penalty, and I think that the main concern should be for them to get the students to school on time and not really, it shouldn't really be an option to just pay your way out of it. So, I don't, I mean, that's one thing I thought. But also, I had a question just in terms of SAM Trans, and if, if there's been a time where students have, either they've missed the bus and they're still waiting at the bus stop, or the bus has changed routes, what do they do? Do the kids know? Like, how would you know that the kids are still waiting?
I've just had my own experience riding Muni for a long, long time. When the bus just drives by you, it just drives right by you. There's not an elaborate conversation, I don't think, with the kids that says, you know, but that's something we have to have a discussion with them about too, if the bus is full, or, you know, I mean, that was my experience, is the bus is full and they just, they couldn't take on any more kids. So, I don't, we haven't had that depth, I haven't had the depth of conversation, perhaps Joan or perhaps Joel may have had that, but I don't know.
I do know that the majority of the students who are getting on the bus SAM Trans are middle school.
Mm-hmm.
And so, there had been a time, I heard about, that the bus never showed up for Bowditch. Heather Morgan and I were talking about it, and so the kids did call, called the school, and then people got them to school. But that can't happen.
Yeah.
So.
And kind of, I think on, on that point is, if that happens, then how do the parents know, or how are they able to come get their child if they're on a bus schedule as well?
So, in this particular instance, the middle schoolers have their cellphone, and they called their parents. But that, but again, as a parent, you're expecting your child to go to the bus stop, get on the bus, and go to school, not expecting to get a call. So, this is part of the concern we have.
I had my turn, go for it. You're welcome, I'll be next.
Thank you for the presentation. I especially appreciate the voluntary desegregation changes, because I always wondered why our northern part of city, San Mateo, didn't have a middle school, and now I understand I would agree with the data. In terms of the SES balance, I would love to actually also have a percentage column, because I was doing the math to figure out the SES chart here, and it would just be helpful to have a, have a percentage of students listed there. The comment about the date range for the First Student data, I appreciate that we're getting it once a month, but obviously, we need more data.
Mm-hmm.
Because this is just a snapshot, and so to really take a deep dive into it, yeah, the fact that we don't have Highlands and Baywood is, is an issue. I have heard Highlands had, we have heard, I mean, the past, you know, stories about how they've had troubles getting to Highlands or getting back from Highlands due to traffic issues. I have seen the comment that you talked about in terms of the buses holding at the curb and not opening the door because of parent, I wouldn't say, well, parent, parent, well, I was trying to think of a nice word, but I'll just say parent restriction, or I don't know, parent blocking access essentially. So, I have seen and personally witnessed that, and so I could understand how that is, and so I'm curious how often that occurs and where, because obviously, that's an enforcement issue that we need to resolve. And then, overall, I, you know, I, I like the fact that we're actually going ahead and looking at this data and actually analyzing, because it is a really big issue, and it's something that perhaps we've never, you know, sort of shed a light on. And I think that this is just the beginning of the data that we need to make more informed decisions. I do understand that, you know, we, maybe the contract is too big, and maybe we do need to, you know, separate it or break it up, because if we're only getting one, one response to our bids, that's really not a competitive bid process. So, I, those are my comments. Oh, the one other thing is, I just, and just happened to be at the time, and when I was reviewing the report, there is a, I don't want to admit, okay, sorry, I went down this path already. There was a startup that just got 20 million, $22 million worth of funding that does exactly this issue. It's called Hop Skip Drive, and they do have, they do operate in our area, and so, they do do transportation that helps with the buses. So, I think the idea is that, you know, this is something that you, it may not work for us, but it's something that we might want to just look outside of the box for. So, thank you.
So, I think we're definitely going to need to come back to this conversation with more data. So, I kind of see that happening in two ways. One is looking at special education as a kind of unique, specific topic of discussion as it pertains to transportation. So, having the data broken down, I kind of already talked about that. I would like also in that presentation for us to have some specific solutions around expediting, increasing this access to your neighborhood school and continuum of care. So, I think that, you know, we should not have kids that are going from San Mateo to Foster City if we can have them in their home school. And I'd, so, and if there's a specific reason why we can't do that, I guess I would like that to be shared at that time. I think that that is a, a way that we can address some of these, hopefully, in a relatively quickly way. For the general education side of things, you know, I think we also need to come back to this conversation with more specific data, with data for all of our school sites, all of that. You know, and I would like to be, as a part of that conversation, as you're engaging in conversations with First Student and SAM Trans, with a proposal for what those bell schedules might look like if they were to change. I, you know, we're in the business here of doing what's best for kids. We've had a lot of conversations about equity as a board, access for all students. This is a massive equity issue. If we have kids that are missing our, you know, a period of school, or potentially a whole day of school, if a bus doesn't come, come to pick them up and they don't have a way to get to school, and so, you can't even begin to talk about what's happening for them in the classroom if they're not in the classroom, right? So, if we need to change the, if, if changing the bell schedule is a way to get more school, kids to school on time, we absolutely need to have conversations with families and let them know, but I do not believe that is open for discussion if this is going to allow for kids to have access to education that they're entitled to. So, I would, I think if that, if we can engage in that conversation with First Student SAM Trans and have ideas for what that might look like, right, we might be talking about a change of five or 10 minutes, we might not be talking about something massive. And the earlier we have that information, the earlier we can communicate with families, the earlier we can implement. And, and then, yeah. So, those, I guess, are the two presentations I see happening, or that I would like to have happen, and some of the things I would like to see at them.
Can I say, I'm not necessarily saying it should be a discussion if, if it, the bell schedule change works to get more kids to school, but I just want to make sure that we cover all the other little things, kind of what you said, whether it's going to be, you know, it's only five to 10 minutes, but what does that look like?
Yeah, and I agree, communication has to be a part of it, for sure.
Can I just make one quick comment?
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody, for the discussion and support, and much of what you shared too, Shar, just now too, that's been the conversation we've had with First Student, because we need to approach this not randomly, but methodically.
Yeah.
If we're going to contemplate making a change that impacts families' lives positively, ultimately, but, but we need to have it, it needs to be based off of analytical, methodical, deliberate, right, conversation. And we're going to, we're starting to build that data now to have that conversation. So, thank you.
Yeah. No, thank you.
I have more comments, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Could I just ask one question?
Yeah, yeah.
Stop, get it out of my head. So, the SAM Trans routes for the middle schools, are those, so I know Bowditch, it seems like, because they drive right by my house, it only goes to Bowditch. Are the other, that's how it is for all the others too? Or they go to Hillsdale Mall, or, you know what I mean?
No, they go.
It's just to the school? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, backing up a little bit, I do want to say, like, I think it's really important that we're having this discussion, but I also want to highlight that, you know, we are part of a larger community, and I do just want to say that, like, the bus drivers at First Student, like, they're, they're probably like low-wage workers, you know what I mean? They're working-class people. It's not my intention by asking for, for more accountability from First Student to say like, oh, we need to like fire this company and hire different ones, and, and that is something that I, I just want to make sure that I say, because, you know, if we haven't been asking for accountability, we have to give some, some time for that to happen. And, you know, I would hate to be part of a decision that, you know, is going to affect potentially some of the parents of the students that we're talking about, you know? Like, everything is kind of like interconnected. So, I just want to say that. Also, I did some math, but you're the math expert, so correct me if I'm wrong. So, I just, by the number of students that you gave for special ed and the amount overall, it's about $10,700 per student. And then, for the gen ed, it's about $1,450 per student, per school year, right?
Yeah.
Per school year. And then, just in response to Shar's comment, I, I, about, you know, having San Mateo students at Foster City schools, I have to say, like, I disagree with that, because I don't think it's that simple. If students are getting on a bus and going to Park School, like I did, from North Central, and I had access to a better education, then that, I think, is something that we need to.
I was talking specifically about special education students that are bused, that might have a continuum of care near their home, homeschool.
Yeah, but even, even then, I still think, like, if we know that, like, if there's discrepancies, right, between different schools, and if, if they, we know they currently have access to a better education at a different school, then, then that's something that we need to like look at realistically, and, and even for special ed students, I wouldn't advocate for having them go to a school in their neighborhood if it's not, if they're not going to get as good of an education. Now, the fact that there's even these discrepancies is something that we need to look at holistically, right? But in the meantime, I think we kind of have to look at it case by case. And then, and then, just in terms of gen ed, period, yeah, I mean, I'm, this, my same, my comment stands for that as well, like, I am not, by looking at this, it was, it's not my intention to say like, oh, we shouldn't be busing kids, period. I think that if they're getting access to a better education, then that, you know, that is what needs to continue to happen. If we, if there's a school that doesn't have the diversity that it needs, you know, then, then, yeah, we need to, we, yeah, I just, sorry, I'm trailing off here. That was my point. And then, there was one other thing, I think, no, that's it, that's all I got.
A thought, sorry. So, the, the transportation fees for sped MPS, NPA transportation comes to like 1.88 million a year, I think. And so, I believe you're going to get us a little bit more detailed, like the data that we asked for. But I'm wondering, in addition to that, or has it been looked at contracting with smaller, like the shuttles and whatnot? Because, I don't know, I've heard good things about those.
Yeah, that, some of those, a droid is a subset of the overall cost. There are some smaller vans that are transported, and that's part of that overall transportation cost. First Student has contracted with a droid for, as a sub to First Student, so that's part of that overall cost. But I'll break it down for you in more detail, you can see in more detail.
Thank you.
When you said that, I just kind of thought of something crazy that might not be possible, but something to explore. We have a bazillion shuttles from tech companies around this area that are running on a daily basis, picking up in a lot of these same neighborhoods. I'd just be interested to know if any companies would be interested in, I don't know what that looks like in terms of league out, like, I know that there's a lot, it's complex, right? But it's just a thought to think about whether or not there'd be any sort of partnership, because those drivers are on time, and those buses are nice. So, I don't know, it's something to potentially consider. Just when you said shuttle, I thought, oh, hmm.
I love it.
We're going to keep, I had one more thing, and then, I mean, I think we could.
That's up to you.
Okay.
I just want to be honest, she doesn't.
I should be honest with you, she doesn't think from there.
Yeah. Yeah. Just, can you fill out a slip? And then I just wanted to make one more comment.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead. You go first, then.
In relation to the commuter shuttles and the tech shuttles, it would be curious to find out whether or not they would be open to sort of working with us. Part of the driver shortage that Sam Trans is having and Commute.org, which is the company or the, the organization, the San, the Northern San Mateo County organization that runs the shuttles off of Caltrain and BART, is, is that those tech shuttles are actually the ones that are causing the drivers to leave all those other shuttles. Because essentially, the issue is, is that they, they get trained by Commute.org, and then as soon as they pass their three-week training, they get handed a card and said, hey, you want to make $20,000 more, give us a call. And so that is exactly what happens. And to your point, Noelia, about First Student, you know, I would definitely not want us to be asking to a degree that we then start, you know, I think we need to ask the questions, and there needs to be accountability. But I definitely don't want to say that they're not hardworking for us, or that we, we don't appreciate them, because the last thing that we want them to do is to leave us as well. So those are my comments.
If I could just comment really quickly, just, my, my interaction with First Student has been, I would tell you, there's, without any reservation, that there is a genuine interest and concern for students' wellbeing, and, and interest in continuing to improve. But there, there, like Dr. Rosas was saying, some of the folks in the office who are managing things are also driving because of their shortage. So it's, it's, right, it's compounded, from what Ken was saying, too, right? So.
Yeah. The one thing I just wanted to say was that I know that we did used to, we, we used to have a contract with the Union High School District, and they previously did our transportation. And so I'm just wondering, like, when did that change? Why, you know?
So I can answer that.
Okay.
So the high school district at one point had a change in leadership. They reviewed their, the amount that they were charging the elementary school district for transportation. They indicated to us at a time when we were in pretty deep recession, that we were going to need to increase the costs. So our CBO worked with the CBO there to try to look at routes and changes. And the amount that they were asking the district was very, was very difficult. The district couldn't pay it. So in trying to negotiate something, eventually the leadership at the time stated that that was going to be the price, and we, the district needed to pay. The district then, at that point, the board, and I was in the room, the board said that they needed to then go out for an RFP, because they couldn't afford to just simply make that kind of change. It was approximately $500,000 change at the time. And so an RFP was put out, and that's when it changed. So that was a very, it was a longstanding tradition to work with the high school district. Now, when we went out for the RFP this time, the high school district did not pick it up because they no longer have the buses and drivers. So it was, so First Student is the one that bid. And that's why I was also suggesting looking at smaller groupings, because we have a bus relationship for many years, but they don't have the drivers anymore, or the buses. So they did not pick up the RFP. Am I speaking correctly, Joel, about that last piece?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And I believe we have a few more public comments.
Okay, Deborah Carlson.
Hi. I live near GoPro and Tesla, and I go on a morning walk around there after my kids are at school. And the commuter buses are just lined up there. They've done their run, and they were doing it at the same time I was dropping my kids off at school. So to think outside of the box a little bit, I'm not saying this is, would work for everybody, but I know at Highlands, they changed the, the schedule this last year for the start time. And some parents were upset about that. But what we did on the other side is provided the library to be open in the morning, so kids can go in there and have someone on the playground to supervise. So then the families were okay that they could drop their kids off earlier, and we could adjust with the bus schedule and things like that. But if we did a bigger shift to adjust the, the school bell schedule for the kids, that's, because we're competing, it seems like, at that peak time, when the commuter buses are all going to. But if you just shift it, and you look at, you know, 8:45, 9 o'clock, all those buses are just sitting there completely unused. And so there might be options for that. And I know that the companies are looking for ways to have some tax write-offs, or, I mean, to contribute to the community. But, you know, that would be something more out of the box to look at, that, you know, if you shift it backwards more. And families that do drop their kids off at school and, and go into work and don't do a bus system or things like that, a lot of them would probably be fine starting later, because they'll do stuff at home in the morning and then work later. So that's one thought along that. But that would require a, a big bell schedule shift. I speak fluent Spanish, and I just wanted to share some thoughts and impressions of what I've seen at the school that my children attend. And the school that we attend is not accessible by public transportation. I have no choice but to drive my kids. Thankfully, I have resources to have a vehicle, and, you know, don't care how much it costs for the gas or whatever, I'm not walking up that steep hill. But I, speaking fluent Spanish, when I'm in the office, oftentimes, I'll smile at a family, and they recognize me because our kids have been in classes together. And if they don't speak English, they will start speaking to me in Spanish. And their stories, I don't think, I don't know that, that you guys know all of the stories of them. And just, just two examples I wanted to share with you is when, when parents were coming for kindergarten tours, or for, you know, to, to check out the school or to register, they ask me, and in Spanish, they'll say, why do I have to come all the way up here? I can't get here. I have to put my kid on a bus to come up here? And then the parents who, the kid misses the bus, and I'm going in and out volunteering, and the parent comes in, and the parent says, I, I just had to miss one hour of my hourly job. I'm late to the car wash. My wife can't drive, so I have to drive the kid up here. If it was public transportation accessible, my wife could drop the kid off on the bus. But, but to see someone have to take a taxi, I mean, they don't even have access to an Uber. They have to take a taxi, which is very expensive, just to go up to register their kid or to drop their kid off at school. And I think that those are bigger issues as to why we have higher students absent. And so I think if you look at that from kind of an equity standpoint, kids without neighborhood schools should have a choice of where they want to go. And you have in here, you know, the socioeconomic balance, and you guys talked some comments about Foster City and San Mateo. But I hope as we have a new school in Foster City, that that would be something that the board would look at to say, okay, we have a new school, is there a slice of the pie in North Central that we can offer this to? And, you know, a piece of the pie at the different schools, because other schools have much higher socioeconomically disadvantaged balances. But Foster City is definitely not having their fair share of that. So I would hope that that would be looked at. And, you know, it's, you think Foster City is far away, but it's actually more easily accessible by public transportation, or walking, or biking, than having to go all the way up the hills, all the way to 280. I mean, that's just unreasonable. And so I hope that, that you will take those, those tidbits, and, you know, surveying families even in the North Central neighborhood, do they want to go to their neighborhood school? And so one other question would be, what is the status on the North Central neighborhood school? Is there an update on that, or do I just leave that question?
Thank you. Lisa Warren.
Hello, and good evening. Let's see, I've never been really good about talking into microphones, and generally, my voice is quite loud. Thank you again for your presentation. It was great to have an idea of where things lie with the transportation. I think one thing that needs to be looked at is the neighborhoods in which the schools are located. For example, my children go to Park. And if you look at the San Mateo Park neighborhood, there's a lot of remodeling going on. And we've had an issue where the bus to pick up, as well as to drop off, has been having a hard time, first off, navigating the islands, because a lot of people have a hard time navigating those islands. But if you can imagine a big school bus, and a long school bus, trying to make it through, that's difficult on a good day. If you are trying to go the same route as a bunch of houses that are being remodeled, good luck on fitting a school bus around those. I've seen them barely miss the trucks in front of the houses. You know, it just makes it more difficult, again, to get the kids to school on time if you have to work on navigating that. Another thing that I noticed was the fact that when we're picking kids up from school in the morning, or picking them out for school in the morning, I'm seeing three routes that pick up at Eldorado. If we have three routes going at the same time, it is going to be a difficult thing to try to get everybody on school, at school on time. And as well as, there seems to be about six routes from 15 South Humboldt, as well as 16 South Humboldt. Again, I feel like we run into the same issue and the same, same thing that needs to be explored. Again, how can you get six buses full of kids to school in an appropriate manner when they're going in so many different directions, and having to be able to manage those buses and get them, or get everybody to school on time? I think that should also be studied as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and this is going to be our last public comment, just because we are over time and we do have to go to closed session, but, yes.
Christina Blanco.
Mm-hmm. So I'm a special education teacher. This is slightly off-topic, but relevant. I think when you're having discussions about the cost of the busing and looking at home schools, one thing I think it's really important to consider is, yes, community is very important. It's a little tricky in our school district, because we have so many magnet schools, and that, just because that is your neighborhood school, that doesn't actually mean that that's your neighborhood community, per se. But one of the things that we see as we've tried to look more at placing students in their home schools, the, the situation that then the teachers are placed in, you have a large caseload, you have multiple grade levels, which, if you think about from a general education perspective, we don't put our general education, sometimes we have combined classes, but for the most part, we wouldn't have, like, a K, all of our Ks, special ed classes are K1, some are K, K1 and 2. And then, when you're trying to give that many different grade levels, and all of our students have different abilities, and challenges and strengths, it's really difficult to reach everyone where they are. So one of the reasons why we've kind of tried to group kids together by skills is because our, our caseloads are high. So if we're looking at, okay, our priority is with community and placing at home schools, then I think one of the considerations should be, well, if a teacher is going to be teaching potentially three, four, five different grade levels in one class, then what, how, how many students are they doing that for? And, and what does that look like? And do we need to have more classroom options? So just something to say, we even have a, a class on, on our, one of our classes is special education two, three, four, five, four grade levels in one class. So the special education teachers were struggling to, to, to reach all of our students with that many abilities and such big caseloads.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Shar and then Allison. Closed session.
You'll need to read the closed session.
Yes, I do. We are recessing to closed session. Government Code 5456.9, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure. Government Code 54956.9, claimant, Wilcox Fish, agency claimed against SMFCSD. Government Code 5457, public employee discipline, dismissal release, and conference with labor negotiators, agency designated rep, board president, and superintendent. If these discussions are not completed before 6:30, the closed session will continue following the regular meeting.